Share my screen. Can you see my screen? It should be a white dot, a white square.
Yeah.
Okay, perfect. Let's begin. So on the last time we got here, we went through exercise eight dash four. But something tells me no one figured it out. So let's try to do it again. Eight, four. Use an notepad. That way we can separate all the clutter. So eight dash four, what does it say? Okay. So are you able to read my screen or no?
Um, yeah, I can.
Can you read out loud what it says?
Um, Dover company began operations in twenty twenty five and determined its ending inventory at cost and at lower cost net realized value at December thirty first, twenty twenty five. And December thirty first, twenty twenty six, this information is presented below.
Yep, let me just write that down really quickly because this is from the book itself. But the textbook really doesn't like copy paste for some reason.
No, literally.
I don't mind it. I understand why they do it, but come on. I need to study for this. Alright, so this top one is cost. And this one over here is net realizable value. For the future, I'm just gonna write it as NRV. And so here are the instructions. And there are three sets of instructions that we have to do. So. Okay. Please read these.
Um, yeah. Okay, prepare the journal entries required at December thirty first, twenty twenty five.
Sorry about that.
And December thirty, it's okay, December thirty first, twenty twenty six. Assuming inventory is recorded at LCN NRV um, and a perpetual inventory system using the cost of goods sold method. Prepare journal entries required at December thirty first, twenty twenty five and December thirty first, twenty twenty six. Assuming inventory is recorded at LCN RV and perpetual system using the loss method. Which of the two methods above provides the higher net income in each year?
Okay, let's get this done. So step one. We'll use red. And what does it say? It says, prepare the journal entries required, assuming inventory is recorded at LCNRV. So first we need to actually calculate LCNRV. And to do that, it's pretty simple. First, we gotta get the cost and then the NRV itself. So thankfully, it's already given to us. So for cost of goods. For the cost of goods sold. At twelve thirty one fifteen. It'll equal the cost minus NRV. Therefore, we look at the paper and it's three, four, six, zero, 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 minus three, two, two, zero, zero, zero.
Okay, wait. Um, okay, so right now, the first step we have to do is to find COGS of um, December thirty first.
Yes.
Okay.
And the reason for this is because you cannot do the journal entry otherwise. Hello? Can you please turn off the music? Who was that? Who just joined? Oh, Sarah Rex. Yeah, I'll be, I'll be streaming the actual image on Discord, so you don't have to talk. But it'd help if you did because we have more voices to go over. Anyways, so when you have this, you'll subtract these two together and you'll get twenty four thousand. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
Okay, so now we need to also get the other one, which is reduction. Four. And it's a twelve thirty one six, twenty six, my bad, twenty six, this should be a twenty five. You gotta catch me on these things. Okay. So.
Wait, why are we getting the reduction?
Because it's NRV.
Okay.
I mean, it just equals cost of goods sold, but we're gonna be reducing by it. That's why it's called reduction.
Hmm, okay.
So it'll be the following. So what we have here, which is twenty four thousand minus open parentheses, what were the numbers here? Which numbers are we using?
Um. Forty one uh, four uh, uh, forty one zero thousand.
Minus. What are we subtracting by?
Bring it, um, can you bring the, the thing back? Um, minus three ninety thousand.
Yep, three hundred and ninety thousand. So now that we have that, if you put that in a calculator, it should give you four thousand. Can you check that really quickly?
Okay, yeah. Yeah.
Okay, so now that we have that, we'll just save that in a little corner somewhere. So COGS twelve thirty one twenty five will equal twenty four K. And reduction twelve thirty one two six will equal four K. And we'll delete this top part because I think you understand basic addition and subtraction. So now that we can do this, let's continue. Cause now we need to actually implement the steps. Do you remember what the steps were?
Um, I do not. No, I didn't do this um, problem yet.
Okay, so prepare the general entries required for December thirty first, twenty twenty five. The December thirty first, twenty twenty six, assuming inventory is recorded at LCNRV and the perpetual inventory system using the cost of goods sold method. Well, we already did the calculation. Now we just have to do the journal entries. So for A. That's not A, that's add. For A. It'll be date twelve thirty one twenty five. Accounts. And it'll be cost of goods sold. And then what are we, what are we crediting? Do you know?
I'm not sure. No, I'm not sure.
We're crediting allowance for inventory reduction to NRV. And this will be one entry. So now we have to do debit and credit. So debiting is here, twenty four thousand. And obviously, if it's twenty four thousand here and this is only one, we're crediting twenty four thousand. Do you understand how we got here?
Okay. I'm not gonna like your handwriting in like the section that you bracketed. Can you read it out?
Allowance for inventory reduction to NRV.
Okay.
Oh, do you want me to write in print instead?
Yeah.
Okay, okay, that's, that's not a problem. So still an A. But for the allowance for inventory reduction to NRV, it'll be the date is twelve thirty one twenty six. And it will be, okay, allowance for inventory reduction to NRV. Can you read that?
Yeah.
Okay, and the other one, what is it? What is, what are we debit? What are we crediting here?
Um, I believe COGS instead.
Yes, cost of goods sold. So in this case, we already did the reduction. So it'll be four thousand and four thousand. Neat, right?
I'm sorry, what did you say?
So did you understand how we got this?
Yeah.
How did we get this?
Um, basically, we first calculated the COGS um, for December thirty first, um, for the year twenty twenty five. And then that's how we got twenty four thousand. And then um, we calculated the COGS reduction um, for twenty twenty six, I believe. And we used that amount from twenty twenty five and um, we subtracted it with the numbers from twenty twenty six. And then we put it in journal. Okay.
Okay.
Is that?
That is correct. So now that we have this one, we need to do the next one, which is B. I'm going to assume you have this all written down. You were taking notes?
Yeah.
Okay. So now what does B say? B says, prepare journal entries required, assuming inventory is recorded at LCNRV and a perpetual system using the loss method. Okay, so thankfully, our numbers stay the same. But for different reasons. So in this case, it'll be loss. Oh, wait, you want print. Loss due to inventory decline equalling twenty four thousand still. And we know that in this case, allowance for inventory reduction to NRV will be twenty four thou, will be uh, twenty four thousand as well. DRCR. And assume you can fit the name. I just, I'm not gonna put the dates just because it takes too much space, but for this instance, it'll be uh, twelve thirty one fifteen. Does that make sense?
Okay, so this is from the year twenty fifteen.
Oh, twenty twenty five. Thank you for catching that. Okay, so what's the second entry? We're still using the same numbers.
What does the prompt say again?
It's the second paragraph.
Okay. The loss method, yeah, I'm not like, I didn't practice the loss method.
Oh, the only thing the loss method really is, is different words. The actual work itself is the same.
Okay, so then would it be like the same thing, but like reversed, like the COGS method?
Pretty much.
Okay, so then allowance for inventory reduction to NRV will be debited and then um, the loss due to inventory decline will be credited.
Hmm, no. You were close. It's just inventory loss.
Okay.
So then DRCR, what are we debiting? What are we crediting?
Um, we're debiting four thousand?
Yes, same goes for the credit. So now that you know that. Let's enter C. Which of the two methods above provide the higher net income in each year?
Would it be um, so they're talking about um, which, like, is it A or B?
Yeah.
That provide the higher net income? Um. Would it be B?
No.
Oh, okay.
Twenty four thousand minus twenty four, minus four thousand equals twenty thousand. And then twenty four thousand minus four thousand equals twenty thousand. Therefore, both A and B provide oh, my bad, equal net income. Does that make sense?
Okay. Um, so these numbers are from both entries, basically.
Yes.
Okay. Okay, okay.
Does that make sense?
Yeah.
Okay. Next question. E eight sixteen. Okay. Let me find the question and then we'll continue. Okay, perfect. It's a gross profit method question. Cool. Okay. Feel free to start reading whenever you want.
Okay. Um, and this is number.
Oh crud. Uh, give me a quick second. That was not how it was supposed to go. Yeah, don't you hate it when formatting is different between documents?
No, literally.
It's the worst.
Literally. Wait, so did you do this beforehand or do you just know how to do it?
Um, I just know how to do it because I studied like crazy.
Like how?
Um, how? You, you read textbook, you look at the slides and you do your homeworks again. Hey then.
Interesting, that's good.
Alrighty then. Please read that.
Okay, um, Wallace Company lost most of its inventory in a fire in December. Just before the year-end physical inventory was taken. The corporation's book disclosed the following. Beginning inventory at one seventy thousand, sales revenue at six fifty thousand. Purchases for the year, three ninety thousand. Sales return, twenty four thousand, purchase returns, thirty thousand. Rate of growth, gross profit on net sales, forty percent. Merchandise with a selling price of twenty one thousand remained undamaged after the fire. Damaged merchandise with an original selling price of fifteen thousand had a net realizable value of five um, thousand three hundred. Instructions, compute the amount of the loss as a result of the fire, assuming that the corporation had no insurance coverage.
So I know how to do this, but let's see if you do. How would you go about this question if you saw this on the test?
Um. Can you, can you bring it, the prompt up again, please?
Right here.
Okay, yeah. Um. I would first start with the gross profit method.
Okay, lead me through it.
I'm not sure, to be honest.
Okay, I'll, I'll tell you what you're gonna do. So first. We gotta get net sales.
Net sales, okay. Wait, what question on the, like?
Oh, this one?
Yeah.
It's E eight, it's chapter eight, question sixteen.
Oh, eight point sixteen.
Yeah.
Okay, okay.
Okay, so you wanna get net sales. How do you calculate net sales? Do you remember?
Um, it's sales revenue minus sales return.
Correct, so six hundred and fifty thousand minus twenty four thousand. Let's plug that in a calculator. That's equals to six hundred and twenty six thousand dollars. Well, just thousand. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
Okay, so next we need to get the cost of goods sold. So what's the formula for cost of goods sold in this situation?
Um. I know like it has something to do with gross profit.
Okay, you're almost there.
Oh, okay, so we use the amount that we got from net sales. And then we multiply that by gross profit.
Subtract.
Okay.
Okay, so you subtract it from gross profit and that will give us six, two, six, comma, zero, zero, zero. Minus, so what's our gross profit? Well, it's our rate times the net sales. Therefore, it's gonna be minus six, two, six, comma, zero, 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 times zero point four. Does it make sense where I got that from?
Okay, yeah. Okay, what I thought, okay, yeah, I said how to get the gross profit, but not the actual equation. Okay, I see that. Okay.
So do you know what this equals?
No, let me do the calculations now.
Yes, do the calculations.
Okay, yeah.
Okay, so I'm gonna, I'm gonna give you some advice. Uh, practice inputting your commands into your calculator because this is a timed exam. You don't have infinite time.
Like, like the calculator I have is the um, financial calculator.
Oh, I see.
And then my regular, like the calculator that I had that could like help input stuff like I lost it.
So the next step you wanna do is calculate the ending inventory as per books. And you calculate this with beginning inventory.
Wait, 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 quick pause. Do you feel like I should just get another calculator that I can input like equations into?
You're supposed to have a Texas instrument BA two plus.
Yeah.
Then you have the right.
What do you? So are, were you talking about the regular calculator?
No, I'm talking about your inputs. You should be faster with your fingers.
Okay.
So it's beginning inventory plus net purchases? That is not how you spell that, Miguel. Minus COGS. So first things first, what is our beginning inventory?
Um. One seventy thousand.
Yes. And then we have to add net purchases. So do you know where we get net purchases from?
Yeah, I believe we take our purchases for the year minus purchase returns.
Correct. And then we subtract by COGS, which is right here. Three hundred and seventy five thousand, six hundred. Neat, right?
Yeah.
So plug this into a calculator. Did you get the answer I got?
Um, no, I'm still putting it in. Okay, the way I'm doing it is that I'm doing it separately, but I don't know how to like do it all in one line.
Uh, you would use the parentheses.
Okay.
Cause it doesn't actually do the calculation until you press enter.
Okay. Just I can't see the parentheses on mine.
Yeah, you're, you're not gonna see them, but it's being read.
Okay. Okay, yeah, I got that.
Okay, perfect. So now we need to get the cost of goods undamaged. If it isn't brutally obvious, I don't write in print at all.
Yeah, I know, like I can read cursive, but I think just seeing this on the screen is a bit hard, like I don't know what it is. Or maybe it's your type of cursive. But yeah, no, it's okay.
It's okay, my bad. It, it's not, I'm not really digging at you. I'm digging at myself for not knowing how to write in print properly.
Okay, okay.
Okay, so to do the cost of goods undamaged. What do we need to do? Do you know the answer?
I don't.
Okay, so merchandise with a selling price of twenty one thousand remained undamaged. Okay?
Mm-hmm.
And then what is the other way of doing this? Let me read it. Diamond merchandise with an original selling price of fifteen thousand had a net realizable value of fifty three thousand. Okay, so you're gonna do the following. Fifteen thousand divided by twenty one thousand multiplied by twenty one thousand.
Wait, sorry, can we take a quick pause? Like I'm trying to write down like what we did before.
Oh, sure, go ahead. Let me know when you're done.
Okay. Okay, yeah. Um, the numbers, can you repeat where you got them?
Which ones?
Uh, for cost of goods undamaged.
Okay, so actually I made a quick mistake while I was checking. So this uh, fifteen minus twenty one divided by twenty one is not correct. Now twenty one thousand, the first one is correct. So the other number we need.
So twenty one thousand is from?
From the question itself.
Selling price, okay.
Yes. So the gross profit was forty percent. So in order to get the other number. We're gonna need that minus one, so one minus forty percent, that'll give us sixty percent.
Hmm.
Okay, one minus zero point four equals zero point six. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
Okay. So you'll put these in your calculator. so you'll put these in your calculator and you should get twelve thousand six hundred it's not how you write a six
yeah
okay so now we need to get some known values we know that a NRV is five thousand three hundred well damaged merchandise NRV
can you go back to the prompt
sure thing
okay damaged merchandise okay yeah I see it
is equal to five thousand three hundred cool so now that we have this number we need to calculate the amount lost by the fire so the way you'll calculate this is ending inventory minus cost of goods sold um my bad not cost of goods sold cost of goods undamaged and then you'll also subtract damaged good NRV damaged merchandise and RV so when you have this what are we plugging in
okay um ending inventory would be one fifty four four hundred
correct
and then of undamaged would be one twenty six hundred
yep
about fifty three hundred
yes so you plug this into a calculator I should give you a hundred and thirty six thousand five hundred
yeah
and that is how you do this question does that make sense
yeah the thing is is like how do I remember the steps
um how do you remember the steps well the answer is simple you practice
hello hello
hello Kino
what's going on brother
uh yeah we're going through some questions right now uh can you please explain how one would memorize steps
think repetition
exactly practice
you've been going through the whole checklist
yeah I've been going through the whole checklist I'm not gonna lie uh numbers three through nine take an absurd amount of time to the point that I'm convinced those are not gonna be asked
yeah cuz we're gonna have the whole three lectures the normal class right
the whole three hours no we're only gonna have three hours there's no way if he gave us everything on this checklist no one's finishing this test I'm dead serious
yeah it's multiple choice right
I hope so I really hope it's multiple choice cuz if it's not we're doomed
he says Scantron
yeah I have my Scantron
hope it's not one of them multiple choice questions or a test that'll have like six answers of
see look at this though this is one question this is what one question is do you see why this is ridiculous okay I'm gonna submit it
oh that shit ridiculous
I hate having to do the tables manually because you know that if I mess up the tables while I'm doing the work then somebody's gonna be confused forever
really in lock-in and study haven't 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 looked at nothing the last day and a half
you are not passing this test
listen I just I just need to I just need to get a a C in this class I'm not even an accounting major
you know what's hilarious by the way uh so because I've done absolutely everything almost perfectly all I need to get to pass this class is a C minus on this test and I have a B
oh really so what would you have to score to get a like a seventy percent
fail the test I can't get zero on it but I could fail the test and still get a seventy percent
yeah cuz right now I have a B plus and for me to pass the class with a C I need to get at least a fifty out of a hundred
good
yeah so but I'm 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 aiming for like a at least a
just out of pride I I kid you
to get like your total um in the class did you guys just add up the totals
no 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 we we checked the syllabus and we used the formula provided by the syllabus to calculate our grade
oh okay
yeah he didn't provide the grade at all so I figured okay let's just calculate it manually and that's how I got my grade
did he go off of two forty or two thirty points
I went off of two forty two thirties with the curve assuming that the top three students get ten percent wrong I I don't like calculating based off curve because the curve is subject to fluctuate and if you don't calculate based off curve you actually tend to do better than you would otherwise anyway somebody read the question while I fill in the the table manually
which one are you under
LCNRV
um the inventory of Ojedo company on December thirty first uh twenty twenty five consists of the following items um A part number one twenty one is obsolete and has a realizable value of one dollar each as a scrap instructions determine the inventory as of December thirty first by the LCNRV method applying this method to each item determine the inventory by the LCNRV method applying the method to the total of the inventory
okay perfect so let's start the let's get to work now so does everyone see the question
I'm trying to pull it up
it's on the discord bro
oh they sent
just watch my stream yeah I have it right here just click I'm sharing my screen right now you see it perfect let's get to work so what this is asking us to calculate from beginning to end I'm gonna put a line here is it gives us part it is just quantity it gives us cost per unit and it gives us NRV correct
yeah wait quick pause um what number is this or on the study guide
oh sure 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 this is chapter eight exercise one twenty five
eight point one okay thank you
now thankfully the ones that don't have a number he said he's not gonna test us on him yeah so four we don't have to do it at all thank goodness anyways anyways so we have our table here therefore we need to calculate the inventory under NRV I mean LCNRV that's the first step right okay so the way you wanna do this is you have part quantity I'm gonna be writing kinda small here because this is a really large section cost per unit that is not how you spell unit cost per unit NRV and then we have quantity times uh cost per unit and we have quantity what is going on quantity times NRV does everyone follow along so far
okay I'm just gonna read what read out what you wrote um this is so basically I can't really see the first line but I just see quantity per unit
quant and then it's cost per unit quantity times cost per unit and then quantity times NRV perfect so we have parts one one zero one 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 two one one three one twenty one two one and one two two does that make sense so far okay so the quantity for the first one is six hundred then we have one thousand then we have five hundred then we have two hundred then we have four hundred then sixteen hundred then two three thousand then three hundred three hundred so now we got to get the cost per unit which is uh ninety five sixty eighty one seventy two oh five sixteen and two forty let me just check the thing yeah you guys see where I'm getting this from
yeah
so then NRV we'll use pink will be a hundred fifty two seventy six one eighty two oh eight one and two thirty five so now we have to do quantity times CPU meaning cost per unit you'll just plug that into a calculator so get your calculators out and start plugging it in five thousand seven hundred times sixteen yeah okay five hundred times eighty gives me forty thousand then two hundred times one seventy gives me thirty four hundred thirty four thousand then four hundred times two oh five will give me two thousand then sixteen hundred times sixteen will give me two five six zero zero and the last one three hundred times two forty give me seventy two thousand okay did you guys get the same numbers I got so now we gotta do the same thing for quantity uh multiplied by NRV okay I seriously wanna know how he expects us to finish this in a a lot of time
have you emailed them at all or no
uh no but other people have
what were they asking
stuff along the lines of like um what's gonna be on the test even though it's on the study and how long does it typically take most people take the entire time hold on did I do that right four hundred times two oh eight yeah I did that right or what's the average grade and they said seventy two percent I believe so that would be an A seventy two percent is A assuming that the curve is accurate be seven did everyone get the same numbers I got
no I'm not uh I got distracted right now I was trying to look wh- what do you see the the actual question for the chapter I wanna have it pulled up on my too like that
you can you can find it on the textbook on the access canvas alright so to to get here you go uh Wiley resource Wiley course resources it'll take you to this page click launch E textbook and then you'll click here go to table of contents scroll to whatever chapter then press control F and look up E the chapter number dot the chapter exercise does that make sense
yeah I have it right
so now we need to calculate the sum uh this one so just add all these numbers up here so it'll be fifty seven thousand plus sixty thousand plus forty thousand plus thirty four thousand plus eighty two thousand plus two fifty six hundred plus seventy two thousand and this will give us three seven zero comma six zero zero do you have the same number that I got
yeah
excellent so now we need to do the same thing for the other column I got three hundred and forty one thousand three hundred please let me know if you got the same
one second yeah
excellent so now that we have this we also inadvertently did part B but this is all required for part A I swear so now when you don't get inventory value under it's not how you write an E LCNRV method therefore to calculate this we need the smallest number between the following two so let's look at the numbers here between fifty seven and sixty thousand fifty seven is a smaller number correct okay so I'm going to apply all of these just uh follow along two thousand thirty eight thousand thirty six thousand eighty three thousand two hundred wait see this is why you guys need to catch me if I mess up I messed up that's not and that's not good you guys didn't catch my error
where you mess up at
there we go there we go see here's the thing I want you guys see here's the thing I want you guys to to catch me on things just to make sure that A you're paying attention and B if I mess up at any point then the entire thing is wrong and that's bad
seventy thousand five hundred
okay does everyone have these exact numbers here
yeah
okay so now what I need is the sum which will equal thirty-three hundred and thirty-five thousand one hundred did you get the same numbers I did
I'm calculating it right now yeah I got that
okay so with this number here this is A and then with these numbers this is B that is part A and part B done in one go does anyone have questions
um can you go back to the prompt let me just pull it up sorry
right here Keno do you have any questions
uh nah I'm I'm trying to trying to get situated right now I'm trying to get the this up and then uh get like paper and all that shit right now but I'll be you can keep going I'll be good for this next
okay perfect and uh you I don't actually know your name sweet pastry
yeah that's fine um okay the thing is like on the exam right like I'm trying to like figure out okay the determine the inventory as of December thirty-first by the L C N R V method applying this method to each out um item that's basically just finding the lower value of the qua- between the two quantity times cost per unit and quantity times N R V
yes
okay and then the determined the inventory by the L C N R V method applying the method to the total of the inventory so when it's saying like total of inventory that's quantity times N R V
yep or quantity times cost per unit one or the other
okay so then we can choose so let's say like it was a multiple choice question and it had like both of these numbers like either of them would be correct
what do you mean
like you're saying either number
no one is for part A and one is for part B if you were asked determine the inventory you would have to do part A only
okay yeah no um for part B like which number cuz there's seventy thousand six oh the lower one okay
any other question
no that's it
okay perfect let's continue so what's next okay chapter seven problem eight let's get this done why are these out of order by the way
what a hell
what you know what you say
to eight point yes seven
yep he knows what's up so my question to you is how do you think we should go about answering this
uh which one the the life of
problem seven point eight oh this be nice to me ah it's not don't you just hate it when it does that
oh yeah category quantity
yeah so what are you guys doing after the exam after all your exams then
oh like during like in September
yeah
I'm probably gonna go to Alaska I wanna see one of my friends he's uh he's out there I'll go visit him you got any plans
um other than uh honestly no not really I just gotta
chill out
yeah I just gotta get life in order it's uh it's all good I mean it's it's true man your life gotta be in order
what uh are you like a summer junior
I'm act- I actually already graduated I'm a graduate student
oh really
yeah
you're taking this class as a graduate student or what
I'm just taking this class as a as a class
just for the fucks of it
not just for the fucks of it as you wanna call it more out of there there's a there's a reason behind why I have to take this class but I'm not actually an undergrad I already graduated
what are you graduate with
uh I graduated cum laude with uh business administration and concentration accounting
and you never took this class or you re- you're taking it again
I never took this class but it turns out they pretty much says like hey so it turns out even though you graduated with accounting you didn't actually finish so go back it's like what so they made me go back and take this
what the hell are you going for the MBA at U C R
I'm going for the Masters of Professional Accountancy alright so this is a category this one is wanted to purchase I apparently cannot spell to save my life yeah it was the funniest things like so how did you graduate with accounting and you didn't take intermediate account and I said I have no idea
that's crazy
no one stopped me it's cost per unit and this should be the last one this will be total
if you look at the thing oh yeah there's there's two of them
yes there are that's what I'm I need to fix this okay the formatting is so terrible okay unironically this might be the worst formatting I've ever seen and U C R's website has terrible formatting
yeah
you know what I mean wait what I have this is a sales price per unit this this top one over here sales price per unit oh somebody's microphone is popping
my bad that must probably me had a I got up real quick hey so so what do you need to uh apply for like a a masters you have to have a good GPA and shirt
you need to have a you need to have a degree obviously
yeah
and then afterwards your GPA needs to be above a certain threshold uh if you want to get with a scholarship you need at least a three point eight
and um what's like the minimum uh three point oh
uh no that's minimum to graduate I believe
oh from the map
no that's just minimum to graduate from like university if you wanna get accepted okay so now that we have these tables because oh my goodness these tables let's get back to work sorry for taking so much of their time with these tables the formatting is terrible okay somebody read this question
name the accounts presented and the financial statements that would have a different amounts of trying to see compute ending inventory cost of goods sold and gross profits part A then part B assume the company uses three inventory pools instead of one repeat instruction am I looking at the right one or am I tripping
I think you're at E seven we're in P seven
yeah I think that's what um you're started
yeah
we're on Norman's television
Norman's television oh he just he just read the bottom part
assume the company uses three inventory pools instead of one or pre instruction A yeah okay okay yeah that's it that's it you just had me a bit confused
I didn't know which one
I I my bad okay then so who wants to lead us through this one
so do we have to do basically like what you did on that last one
no
to compute end- ending inventory don't we need beginning inventory and I don't see that
so give me a quick second I need to check something really quickly alright we found a question that is moderately hard good
um he said that he'll go over this topic again today in class
okay so that means we cut it off in one hour because I gotta drive for like two hours just to get to class
where the hell do you live bro
it's it's I live in Chino it's not very far I can make the drive in twenty minutes the problem is them trucks man them trucks cost traffic you know what I mean okay
should we go to another question since we'll be covering this in class again or
let me ask you a question whenever the professor explains a question in class do you understand what he's saying
um sometimes yeah but then like if not like um I'll take a picture and like go through it myself
also I just wanna point out that uh quantity purchased is beginning inventory
okay so do you wanna go through it then
let's go through it let's go through it yeah why not okay so we have category let's use a different color let's use blue teal and the category is portable midsize and flat screen and then our quantity purchased is our beginning inventory and that is sixty K eighty it's six K eight K three K plus quantity purchased and that is fifteen K twenty K and thirteen K I bet and ten K is that correct
uh twenty K ten yes
fifteen K twenty
uh the first one i- is it doesn't say quantity purchase it just says quantity the second table is the one that says quantity
yeah I'm looking at the second table
for sure for sure
yeah we're 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 gonna have to make more tables that's the problem minus quantity sold quantity sold is oh it's it's this one here so it's fourteen twenty-four six and forty and and that's it so fourteen thousand right here is quantity sold so that is fourteen thousand twenty-four thousand and six thousand so now that we have that we'll get ending inventory does that did everyone follow along with that
yeah
okay somebody pull out your calculator let's get to work is that good so far
yep eighteen K
okay so just so you guys know this is considered a price index so now that we have the price index we can compute cost of ending inventory
wait you're saying that the total is the price index or just this whole process
this is uh the price index I believe that the total is the index
okay
yeah total is the index but we're not gonna be using total just yet so it says compute the compute the cost of ending inventory which you can get with a ending inventory as follows but first we need to actually finish the entire system then we can compute the ending inventory does that make sense so now we'll go with totals so once more portable midsize oh right print you guys want print then flat screen then total so for this we're going to need ending inventory we're going to need the base year which will be divided into two sections which is unit cost which will be divided into two sections which is unit cost and total cost then we need end of year which will be unit cost and total cost so with the ending inventory we've calculated them all so let's go seven thousand four thousand and seven thousand we'll add these up and we should get eighteen thousand am I correct okay so the unit costs are given to us in the problem itself so cost per unit is one hundred two fifty and four hundred and then the total cost will be a multiplication of this of the fact so this will be seventy thousand and then the next one will be four thousand times two fifty
that's seven hundred thousand
oh thank you for catching that seven hundred thousand then we have a hundred thousand I mean one million right it's one million correct
yeah
okay then seven thousand times four hundred which will give us two million eight hundred thousand
sir
okay so now we need the end of year unit cost so that is the second set which is down here one hundred ten three hundred and five hundred so now we have to do the calculations again so seven thousand times a hundred ten four thousand times three hundred will give us one point two mil and then seven thousand times five hundred will give us three million five hundred thousand so now we need to get these two totals meaning seven hundred thousand plus one million plus two million eight hundred thousand and this will give us four million five hundred thousand and then down here it'll be seven hundred and seventy thousand plus one point two million plus three point five million and it should give us five million forty hundred and seventy thousand did you guys get the exact same numbers I got
yeah
so now now that we have this we can finally calculate price index and price index equals ending inventory at current divided by ending inventory at base therefore it's going to be five million four hundred and seventy thousand divided by four million five hundred thousand this will be one point two one five five six is that correct
you round up on the on the sixth decimal
I I just did the fifth decimal yeah I just did the fifth decimal just cuz yeah so now that we have all of this we can start doing the fun stuff I hate saying that okay so we know from the question that our base layer cuz we're doing ending inventory LIFO for ending inventory and inventory will be done with LIFO specifically so let's see if I got this right it'll be four hundred four million nine wait 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 wait
um really quick
yeah
um my calculator just gave me one point twenty two if I just inputted one point twenty two like would that be okay
as long as you don't as long as you don't just type one twenty two but then do the but do the division and then multiply by it for example you should be fine nothing will happen to your calculation
okay
anyways what's our base layer does anyone know
isn't it the the numbers under base year
we need to calculate our base layer where the hell do we get base layer from oh right it's from the question itself it's uh our base layer is this and also I just wanna point out that the question itself never tells you that this is a base layer to my knowledge it just kinda expects you to know this okay so now that we have this number here this is our base layer we can start doing all the calculations so first things first for ending inventory LIFO ending inventory LIFO it'll be our base year total cost which will be four million five hundred thousand minus our base layer which will be three million eight hundred thousand does that make sense
yeah so that that would be the answer to A
almost
compute ending inventory
almost then we multiply by our price index which will be one point this is this is this so now that we do that let's let's get the multiplication ready this should give us now let me know if you got a different number eight five zero comma eight 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 point eight nine did you guys get the same numbers me
mine mine rounded up well
but is it is it like close
mine's eight hundred and fifty thousand eight hundred and ninety two
oh mine is eight hundred fifty four thousand um yeah that's it
okay then we just have rounding errors but this would be our ending inventory next we need cost of goods sold and this will equal base beginning inventory plus total purchase minus and inventory so our base beginning inventory is our base layer so three million eight hundred thousand plus total purchases once more a question where do we get total purchases
is it forty five thousand is it the added
let me
quantity purchase
let me check it should be no cuz forty five thousand is the cost total purchase this is gonna be the part cuz always something right always something where do we get total purchases from come on we're doing so well we're just tell me where we get total purchases from no that's not right
how do you know how do you know that we have to use total purchases
it's in the formula
okay wait this formula did you get it from the textbook
yeah so there's also quantity purchased
quantity purchase you sure it's not forty five K
I think it is forty five K you're right I think it might actually be forty five K I think I'm just uh messing out somewhere yeah you're 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 definitely right it's forty five K I think I'm just the I'm just tripping over here
are you good says quantity sold purchase
yeah but it says total purchase though not not quantity it's total purchase
you add maybe both
uh let's see oh I think that maybe we have to do an addition problem really quickly
it's never that easy really
yeah it's it's never that easy they they'll never give us an easy question I swear never no 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 this professor remember the first day we went to his class what what did he say to us
thing I know what you're talking about
what did he say
oh my god what did he say he was like I forgot and I know what you're talking about
like think sometimes I'm not gonna lie
he said prepare to suffer
what
the first day in class he said prepare to suffer
I was thinking about something else I I remember him saying something like along the lines of like it's never that it's never that
were all were all of your accounting classes like this
oh hell no
were they easier
they were way easier than this
bro why am I taking the first hard ones
cuz I know what my ending inventory is my ending inventory is right here but what is my number that sounds weird to say
are any of you sorry I'm just like asking questions but are any of you guys taking business one sixty five B like next session
yeah
you are
oh you never took that one either bro
no they literally let me graduate and it's like hey uh we're gonna need you to come back like what the fuck
should've told him like no I'm good bro already got the
well no they can revoke
talk to your advisor
I talked to my advisor my advisor never never stopped me on anything okay
that's crazy
so at this point I legitimately don't know where total purchases come from
taking one hundred W so writing
oh that's so chill you're so good
yes chill
so yeah easy it's it's the most chill class ever
I need right now I do need to add another class though oh a question off topic so so I transferred I am a junior and to be during the summer to be full time RCC was four credits right and you're full time right so I thought it was the same thing since it's split in half so I took four and four and now they're telling me that to be full time you have to take twelve
yeah it's twelve or full time
hmm so I was trying to add a second class to this um you know summer B and a lot of them are like not full you know cuz there's always a discussion and then there's a um the actual lecture right lectures are like empty but the discussions are full there's like a waitlist for them do you know how that works cuz I'm trying to add a class
um I'm not gonna lie I don't
I don't either cuz usually it's the opposite
let me let me show you I'm kinda confused about this
I don't get it what am I doing wrong
what am I doing
because I know for a fact that total purchase has its own formula you know can someone just look at the total purchase formula why am I not doing
I was I was about to look it up so I got distracted total purchases equal beginning inventory plus net purchases minus ending event
wait a minute beginning inventory plus net purchases
minus
oh my god okay okay I think we figured it out guys do you know why I think we figured it out because we're the best
you got it
yes
beginning inventory which is ours six thousand times one hundred plus eight thousand times two fifty plus three thousand times uh no I messed up
wait what were you multiplying
no it's not that I'm looking at our quantity purchase but I and then cuz that's our beginning inventory but I don't actually know how to calculate the beginning inventory it's a it would be beginning inventory plus quantity purchase minus quantity sold so it'd be ending inventory right here so seven thousand times one hundred plus four thousand times two fifty plus seven thousand times four hundred then we subtract that by our ending inventory what the fuck hold on hold on hold on I think I think I think we're on to something guys
Okay.
Remember, this is a study session, not the answer key. We gotta figure this out. That way we can pass the exam for real.
Sorry, bro. I just got I got I got distracted. Are you guys ta- so, real quick, are you guys taking, uh, one sixty-five B online?
I'm not taking that class. I don't have to take it.
No? You are? What's your name?
I am.
Is it? Fuck, it's 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 open too. I don't know if I should take it.
Take it.
I'll take another account. But I I do need to add another one.
Take it. What other accounting classes are like chill? Cuz I'm trying to see, I don't know if I should just take like one sixty-five B like during the school year. And then just take another accounting class next session.
Okay.
Are you an accounting major?
I'm, yeah, you have to take them all eventually. Cost of goods.
But the during, like, it's during, like, doing it for five weeks, like, it was not easy.
Okay, you know what? Let me just look at total.
Online, I feel like online is a lot better, though.
Okay.
Okay, total.
That's why I'm like debating. Sorry, bro, what were you saying?
Okay, total purchase is cost of sales plus. My bad. It is closing inventory plus cost of sales minus opening inventory. So in other words, it'll be eight hundred and fifty thousand, eight hundred eighty-eight point eight nine. Plus cost of sales. What's our cost of sales, guys? I have no idea what our cost of sales is.
Cost of sales?
Yes.
Would it be quantity sold times the selling price per unit?
That could be it. If so, we just found an answer. Okay, that would be plus five, four, seven, zero, 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 zero. For that. Minus. Closing inventory. Which is. Here.
Do you think it's possible to like just leave the orange words or the orange writing? Cuz I feel like writing on top of it is kinda like confusing.
Oh, you want me to just delete everything else?
Um, I mean, that's if Kino's okay with it.
Sorry, can you say it again?
Like, is it okay if, like, we could just leave the orange?
Oh, yeah, yeah, go ahead. Uh, I took a picture of this. I like taking pictures and go over it.
Yeah, okay, it's perfect. I have to be very careful here. I don't wanna delete any oranges. I don't wanna delete any orange.
Are you taking Namon Dasai?
Yes. I saw that he's good on making.
I I saw, I'm I'm looking at it right now. It's four point eight, but I think they're talking about other classes. Business twenty.
No, I saw that some of them.
You wanna take business twenty, take it with Dr. Almandras.
Rest.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
I I'm not kidding.
So I I'mma do, I'm operations, right? By chain management. So I think like I could take this class. It would count as an elective, though. Which I need twelve units.
Honestly, it's really up to you. Like, I'm sure there are easier classes that could count as electives. But.
I think I'mma just.
Take it, huh?
I think I'mma just take it.
Okay, yeah, take it.
They, uh, I'm I'm using the GI Bill. I was a veteran, so for me to get save the full thing, I need I need to have to take twelve, you know? And I'm taking eight and a half right now.
Okay, I take it.
Get, I'll drop it if it's.
Does this look right now?
Yeah.
Fuck.
Oh, shit.
I don't care. Fixed it. Okay, so just for the sake of getting this done, I know this number isn't the correct number, but at this point, no one's gonna stop me. We'll we'll use, we'll use a placeholder number, one, six, four, five. I mean, four, four. Five, zero, zero, zero. Minus the ending inventory, which was eight, five, zero, comma, eight, eight, eight point eight nine. Plug this into your calculator and you'll get cost of goods sold. And then finally, for gross profit. You'll plug this into your calculator, be sales minus COGS. So it'll be. Your your big bad number in your question itself. Which is. Okay. Which will be. This number. Multiplied by this number. It should be one. And this should be three hundred, not four. So multiply these numbers, you'll get this number here. Five, four, blah, blah, blah. No, it's wrong.
Is there like a? Uh, what you call it?
It's from, it's from this section, the quantity. No, there's no answer key. There is no answer key. I wish it was an answer key. So it'll be. Six thousand plus fifteen thousand. Equals that. Times. Uh, what are we multiplying by? By our number here. One, one, zero. Yeah. Plus. Again, which is twenty-eight thousand times three hundred. Plus. Sixty-two thousand. Times. Five hundred. I'll give us that number. So that number. Uh, if if it isn't blatantly obvious, I didn't do that written down. I just wanna get this done with a calculator. So just follow my vocabulary, my vocabulary. Just follow my verbiage. Minus. Cost of goods sold, which is whatever this is. You'll do that and that'll give you gross profit. Does that make sense? Okay, I'm done with this question. That is part A. Now we need to do part B.
My God, I forgot there's a part B. Oh.
Remember.
Oh, I was about to go eat, bro.
That was part A. So assume the company uses three inventory pools instead of one repeating instruction A. You know what? I don't give a fuck. If we get this question wrong on the exam, I don't care. We're moving on. Does that make?
I was gonna go, I was gonna go eat right now, bro.
Are we okay with that? If we get that question wrong, we just move on?
Yeah.
A shitty part is he won't give us partial credit, you know, for even starting it. That's crazy.
You guys heard me say, okay, next part B, and you were like, fuck that.
This was not pre-deeped.
Think about that.
Whole another section.
If he asks us that question on the exam, what do you do?
That's good.
I'mma, uh, I'mma go eat right now, though, guys. Um, are you guys gonna study or do the session again tomorrow or what?
Um.
Can we do one tonight?
Uh, I'll do one, not tonight, I'll do one to on. I can do it Saturday for the whole day.
Yeah, I'll be down.
Okay, so the next one will be full day Saturday and.
Yeah, I'm not tomorrow, not Friday.
I have another exam on Friday.
Oh, shit.
What other class are you taking?
I'm taking taxation.
No way, bro. No way.
What?
You gotta wait, bro. You got you got a whole degree to take on accounting, to take any accounting classes? What the?
I know. It's the funniest shit.
That's crazy.
Here's the funny thing, right? So I took one sixty-six, which is accounting. I took, I took one oh four, one oh eight, twenty and twenty-one. And they gave me my degree. They never stopped me until after I got the graduation. Then they messaged me.
What happens if you don't? Like, if you wouldn't have taken it?
They just revoked. They revoked my degree, yeah. They revoked it. They called.
Wow.
What do you mean, wow?
Crazy.
I gotta know the material.
No, yeah, that's true. That's true.
Yeah, yeah.
Wait, so how was taxation?
Um, piss easy.
Wow.
It is an absolute joke.
Let me see if that class is open.
What happened?
First. What what? What is that one? Uh, business? What was it? Personal taxation's business, what?
Uh, one sixty-eight A.
Oh, that one's open too. Wait, hold up.
It's open.
Nah, it it was for the, uh, summer A.
Yeah.
Damn.
Ending. Oh, I was gonna ask, uh, you signed up for one sixty-five B? How did you do that if? What I tried to do right now and it told me a prerequisite is this class.
So what I did, I just talked to my counselor.
Uh-huh. And you, and they just added for you?
They just added it for me, yeah.
Okay.
Well, I mean, it's not even like I had a choice, mind you. They just kinda put me in everything. They're like, yeah, uh, we're sorry about this. We don't know how we never caught this, but you're actually missing a bunch of classes. Like, what?
So you are taking one sixty-five B then?
Yeah, I'm taking that. I'm not taking one sixty-eight A B. One sixty-eight B, I'm not taking it. I don't have to take that shit.
And you're doing it online, too?
Yeah.
Next, okay.
Which honestly. Next quarter, yeah. Yeah, and it's still summer. Okay, here's the next question.
I'mma go, I'mma go, though. I'mma go. I'mma hit you guys up.
We'll do this last question. And then, and then I'm gonna go to the actual class because I I at this point, I'm actually sick of this class.
Yeah, fuck.
Okay.
I'll, I added you guys, though. I added you guys.
To what?
Okay.
Added me to what?
Uh, Discord, sending you guys a, a friend and.
Yeah, you sent, I sent me a friend request, okay.
I'll hit you guys up, though, right?
Accept it. I accept the friend request. Okay.
Thank you.
Now, my friend, Sweet Pastry, send me a friend, accept my friend request.
Okay, wait, I don't know how to like do that on here.
It's okay. It's okay. You'll do it later.
Okay, is it okay? I can add you after, yeah.
Yeah, obviously, obviously. So read this question here. This is the last one we're doing for today.
Okay. Um, the screen is loading. Oh, my gosh.
What was that question? Actual, wait a minute. What was the fuck was that question?
I don't even know. Like, is he real? Like, he said he's actually gonna assign it, but he just said one problem on the final.
It's not one problem. The final's like fifty questions.
No, literally.
He literally said the final's fifty questions.
And he said it'll be one out of the fifty. Okay, I can't really see the screen.
Okay, the balance sheet of Starsky Company at December thirty-first, twenty twenty-four includes the following. Notes receivable, accounts receivable, less than lots for doubtful accounts.
Quick pause. I'm so sorry. What number is this?
This is. Chapter six, problem six.
Okay, six point six, okay.
It's E six dot six specifically.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Okay, now that you know that, let us continue because my goodness, this was, uh. I wanna say this is productive. Can we agree that this is productive?
No, yes, yes. Actually, working it out is productive, yes.
Yes, as bonkers hard as some of these questions are.
No, literally.
So I was like, and then we had to do part B and you guys panicked.
Cuz there's no way, there's no way we had to do part B. There, that wasn't part B. There's no way.
If he makes it, if that's the question he picks, I swear to God.
Oh, my gosh.
Okay, okay, so now that we're here, let's just, uh, let me show you how much easier this is. So this one is asking us to. Prepare all the journal entries.
Mm-hmm.
Okay? So for this one, so notes receivable, three, six, zero, zero, blah, blah. So journal entry one, accounts receivable of a hundred and thirty-eight thousand were collected, including accounts of sixty thousand on which two percent sales discount. Were allowed. So effectively, we know that we have cash, sales discount. And accounts receivable. This is D R C R. We know that our sales discount is the, what is it, two percent? Yeah, it's two percent. Of sixty thousand, of sixty thousand, which is twelve hundred. And we know that our cash collected was. One thirty-six. Hundred over here. Yes, 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 one thirty-eight. So we'll take, we'll take the sum of this and this should give us one, one three six point eight, my bad. Six, eight.
Wait, how did you get?
How did I get that number?
Mm-hmm.
So I'll tell you cuz this is one three eight. And the one three eight zero, zero, zero minus twelve, zero, 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 I mean, just zero, zero. This will give us. One, three, six, eight, zero, zero. Does that make sense?
Yes.
So that's journal entry one. Very simple, very easy. Let's move on. I swear this question is easier.
I'm not the best of journal entries, bro, like.
But this is ea- this is still easier than the previous thing you were doing.
It is, it's official.
What happened? But we're not actually done with the first journal entry. Now we need to do without the discount. So now, with our discount. This will be. One, three, eight, zero, zero, zero minus sixty K. So we'll have, uh, without discount being credit seventy-eight thousand. Uh, discount. Being credit. For, uh, sixty K minus twelve because that's two percent, so fifty-eight, eight, zero, zero. And then total receipt.
Wait.
Will be these two together. And that'll be a hundred and thirty-six thousand, eight hundred. This just proves to you that they equal the same. Got it? this just proves to you that they equal the same got it this this will be your check to see if it's correct got it
um okay wait real quick um the seventy-eight thousand you got that from subtracting no okay from one thirty-eight thousand minus sixty thousand
yeah my bad I I wrote the wrong number better
yeah
okay now we have to do the second journal entry fifty I mean five thousand three hundred dollars were received in payment of an account which was written off the books as worthless in twenty twenty-four okay accounts receivable allowance for doubtful accounts
sorry quick pause um I was still trying to write everything down but I'm just sure um that I have it so basically without the discount it's seventy-eight thousand and then the fifty-eight thousand is what value again sorry
so you do it it's that does that make sense
um yeah but um what value is it
that's two percent of sixty thousand
okay yes um but what's the name of it
it's called discount
okay so to find it's just discount or
this is discount is sales discount SD the sum is equal to discount and the subtraction is discount
okay okay
got it
yeah okay
at this point you ever heard the term I'm sick
no I mean yeah
yeah no I'm not actually sick I'm just sick of this bullshit
no literally literally
so does that make sense these are journal entry for part B
allowance for doubtful accounts okay is are we always gonna do these whenever we're dealing with a problem like this number two
uh this is part this is two this is literally part two
okay okay
okay number three customer accounts of seventeen thousand five hundred were written off during the year awesome that's also super easy
wait I'm so sorry can you like go back to what you just deleted
so sorry I have it right here
okay thank you like give me one second sorry
I I know I'm in a I'm in a huge rush now cause I gotta leave in like fifteen minutes
oh my gosh okay would we have time to
okay you know what we we can go over it tonight
okay thank you so much wait are you sure cause your exam is tomorrow
I'm honestly we'll go over it until midnight and then I'll study for my exam
are you sure
okay fine we'll go for until eleven then I'll study
okay okay thank you so
one hour you're like are you sure
it's like you know to go into the AM like you'll be half awake and stuff you know
I'm okay
okay okay thank you I appreciate it
okay so have you written this down
yes I have thank you
okay allowance for doubtful accounts and the other one is accounts receivable who record accounts were enough so D R C R one seven five zero zero one seven five zero zero that's for C
okay so number three
yeah does that make sense
okay um number three customer accounts of seventeen five hundred were written off during the year so anything written off that's um allowance for doubtful accounts
yeah
okay
okay okay to write off is a allowance for doubtful accounts but to reinstate it's a credit allowance does that make sense
okay reinstate
is credit for allowance and then write off is debit allowance
okay wait I thought okay wait so to write off do you mean by allowance do you mean allowance for doubt okay okay
does this make sense
yeah
okay finally we'll go into the hardest one at year end allowance for doubtful accounts was estimated to need a balance of twenty thousand the estimate is based on the analysis of age accounts receivable okay so prepare yourself so this will be a bad debt expense and that's our that's our debit and our credit will be allowance for doubtful accounts so how do we record this so first we're gonna need the following beginning allowance balance we're then going to need to add of already written off accounts we're gonna need less accounts written off during year and then we're gonna need unadjusted ending balance and then we're gonna be two recorded so I forgot to less adjusted ending balance I bet less adjusting and balance and what we have as our number will be what we record so our beginning allowance balance was a number obviously right it's seventeen thousand three hundred then we have to add the reinstatement of already written off accounts as we know from the second journal entry that's five thousand three hundred so we then subtract by accounting written off during the year accounts written off during the year which will be one seventeen thousand five hundred therefore this is a less so we subtract and we should get for our unadjusted ending balance will be five thousand one hundred then we subtract our adjusted ending balance which was stated in the question to be twenty thousand this in turn will give us fourteen thousand nine hundred so our bad debt expense for debit will be fourteen thousand nine hundred and our credit for allowance for doubtful accounts will be fourteen thousand nine hundred do you that do you understand how I did that
honestly I think it would be better to go over this again tonight I'm so sorry
yeah we'll go over this again tonight for an hour cause I'll get home at around hopefully ten if we finish class early
okay
so we finish at eleven and then tomorrow I'm just gonna study for my other exam which I've been studying like crazy for anyway so we'll continue that studies studying and then Saturday the whole day I'll just be on the discord
okay but okay okay
and my goal would be to start at ten AM
okay on Saturday right
yeah 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 okay so let me let me just say this segment uh Saturday at ten AM to five PM will do a last minute cram okay does that work for you excellent therefore I will leave it there today is there anything you wanna say before we go
uh do you have any like tips on like how I can like really start like practicing should I like redo the problems we just did today
yes
okay and then honestly like I I like I don't really feel that confident on the exam do you know like what questions I should really like really practice again
actually let me just the give you something cause this is probably going to help you a lot more than you think I I actually have the previous one the previous uh the previous uh s- study the one from the one from yesterday cause we did a study session yesterday and it went on for quite a bit so I'll I'll give it to you
thank you so much
shareable link uh discord there that this is us going over the questions that we did that we didn't cover so you know how we started like halfway through it
yeah
yeah here you go
thank you so much and then you said that questions three to nine might not be asked
eh I said that the questions that don't have numbers will not be asked three to nine are the hardest questions is what I said
ah okay hardest
except maybe the one we did before where we all like have no idea what the hell was going on anyways anyways uh I'm gonna have to take off now have a nice day
yes thank you so much you too you too thank you thank you